All right, let's call to order the regular board meeting on May 16 at 6:00. I believe the forum has been met, so let's take a roll call.
Mr. Craddy.
Here.
Mr. Bittman.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Coiblano.
Mrs. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mrs. Wiley.
Here.
All right, with that, we'll move on. The meeting will start and we'll move to number two, the closed session. So I will make a motion to move into closed session at 6:01 PM.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Troy. Can I have a roll call to move into closed session?
Mr. Coiblano. Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bittman.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
All right, that moved out there.
And, uh, other questions? We have Mr. Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Craig.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mrs. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Bittman.
Here.
Mr. Quangiano.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
All right, with that, we'll start the meeting and we'll move on to number four. We have the pledge of allegiance. We have the Huntley High Five winners who will lead us in the pledge.
Pledge. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, board. We are delighted to have some fantastic kids here with us tonight. These are our Huntley High Five winners from May across the district. So, we're gonna have them come up one at a time and tell you who they are.
My name is Christian King. Uh, my school is Chesapeake Elementary and I'm in second grade.
All right, Christian, wait right on up there. I'm gonna read to you some of what your teacher said about you. Christian has done a great job always following the Chesapeake roaring expectations. He does an amazing job being involved in both his English and his Spanish class. Are you in dual language? He is also a great role model for his little brother who started dual language in kindergarten this year. Way to go!
Hi, my name is Oliver Kevin and I go to Conley Elementary and I'm in surgery.
You ready to hear what they had to say? Oliver is a third grade student in Conley who has shown his Conley spirit by helping his friends during intervention. Oliver's very hardworking this year, kind, and patient, and always ready to learn. We appreciate Oliver's positive attitude and willingness to help others. You are a great classmate, Oliver.
Hi, my name is Brooklyn Rocha. I'm, I'm in McCaven School and I'm in first grade and...
And Brooklyn, are you ready to hear?
Thank you, Ms. Rocha.
Yeah, are you ready to hear what your nomination says? And I've had the pleasure of getting to know Brooklyn all year because I come and read to her class every month, right? So, this is pretty accurate. Brooklyn has a heart of gold and that was in big, bold letters. Brooklyn is always there to help any way, shape, or form throughout the day in our class community as well as throughout McCaven. She will help keep our class clean, hug a friend who's having a hard time, cheer on a friend doing a great job encouraging others, and will assist and show love to her teacher all the time. Brooklyn has the biggest heart ever.
Hi, I'm Hannah Higgin. I'm in fifth grade from Markinell Elementary.
Hannah, you ready to hear what they had to say?
Yeah.
And actually, I was at Hannah Martin at the end of the meeting and I talked to Mrs. Havel and she was so excited that you were selected and she said, "I forgot a lot of her." Hannah Martin Huskies are proud to announce Hannah as our Huntley High Five winner. Hannah is a true leader. She is a fifth grade student ambassador and is respectful, responsible, and learned and involved in her learning. She was described as a good friend, hardworking, and amazing partner to work with. She is nice, smart, creative, and always in a good mood. Congratulations!
Good evening, Olivia Saunders. I'm in third grade and I go to Olivia Elementary.
Hi, Olivia, are you ready to hear what Olivia had to say about you? Olivia is just a remarkable young person. Her dedication, thoughtfulness, and willingness to assist others in a mature way are all admirable qualities. Olivia brings a lot of positivity and support to those around her each and every day. We are so very lucky to have a Leggie leopard like Olivia. Congratulations.
Hi, I'm Jessica Swansberry. I'm an eighth grader from Hyden Middle School.
All right, I know it's hard to stand up there and hear all these great things we do, I should be super proud. Jessica is an exemplary student in the classroom and has positively impacted Hyden Middle School as a member of both our band and choir program. In addition to her normal school activities, Jessica serves as a member of the National Junior Honor Society. In addition to her normal school activities, Jessica serves as a member of the National Junior Honor Society. The skills that Jessica utilizes to navigate all of her activities and still perform at a high level in the classroom will no doubt help her succeed as she moves on to Huntley High School. Good job, Jessica.
Hi, Evan White, eighth grade, for Parliament Middle School.
Hi, Evan. I remember meeting you at St. Waldorf. You were helping out with everything. You ready to hear what Marlo had to say? Evan is a leader amongst his peers and consistently goes above and beyond to support his classmates. Evan manages multiple sports teams, helps organize school events, and is consistently involved in extracurricular activities. Not only is Evan involved in the school, but he is extremely kind to his classmates and will be greatly missed as he moves on to high school next year. Congratulations!
Hi, my name is Alexis Jones. I'm a senior at Huntley High School.
Did we tell you last night about the ceremony? Alexis is a joy to have in class. She is respectful by following classroom rules, responsible by always being prepared for class, and involved by asking questions when she has them. Not only is she a friendly student who is willing to help her classmates, but whenever I see her in the hallway, she is smiling and always surprised me. Alexis is an excellent example of living the Raker way. Congratulations! We have a certificate briefing. Parents, thank you so much for sharing your children with us each and every day. They are great role models in our school. And this evening, we are very excited to have two second graders ready to give us a scoop from Chesapeake. And I got to meet with them and their principal about two weeks ago. And I'm super excited to see your final product and hear all about Candy Day. So, this evening, we have Aubrey and Emilio. Are you guys ready?
Yeah!
Take it away!
Hi, my name is Aubrey. I'm in the Tismar's class in second grade.
Hi, my name is Amelia and I'm in second grade in the Kennedy's class. Explore, we like to explore for one of these activities we got to use names of lions and big particles from melting. Some of the materials that we used were sticks and leaves and... One of our things that we also liked was the second grade concert. Some of our favorite songs were like "Thunder," "Rain on Me," "Echoes of the Sun." So, we got to use some things like glow up like... Another thing was the art show. Some of the pieces that I did was a bluebird, apples, and pumpkin, and... rainbow. I did the pumpkin and the rainbow. My favorite one was the bluebird one because I love animals and I love the color blue. Why I love the pumpkin? Because we could use, because we could paint it. Jump rope for heart. We like to jump rope for heart. We got to use our friends and jump rope. And it was so cool. It was glow in the dark. Math, we love math. I like math because on Fridays, we get to play fun games. We get to use throwing blocks and... Writing, we like to write in this slide. My group did the desert. We had to find three cool facts about the desert. I think the forest. Books, we made books. Some of them are, I don't even know what to say. Giants love tacos and donuts that fit in... We like them because they're funny. And one of them eat tacos. Reward day, we get these things, conchita books. We get to spend them on one special day. And then on Friday, we get to do some reward setting. There are like star lamps, tattoos, and... they'll be eating. The old trip, we went to see a trip. We got to make slime and go to this big museum. We also like the big playground. If you come to Chesapeake, you have to come to read this. I like the dome because I get to climb. And I like the walls I used to climb on. If I was principal today, I'd be candy day. If I was a principal, I would bring stuff in.
Aubrey and Emilio, you're not in the same class, are you?
No.
No. So, one of the things that I just wanted to share was I remember being in the principal's office with you guys and your minds just kept racing with all the things that you could share. And we knew we had a time.
My mind exploded.
Your mind exploded. But, something that I need to share about your presentation is even in second grade and not being in the same class, the skills about cooperation and working together and how you communicated and presented. Even some adults have a hard time doing things like that. And you did that beautifully. I think that there were so many skills that we can definitely see that aren't even on that slide that you're learning at home and at school. And so, I thought you did a fantastic job working together even though you guys are in the same class and had time to do so.
Good job.
Yeah, any questions?
Tell me more about this Candy Day.
Well, we get lollipops.
Good, you handed me a candy.
How did you... Favorite candy?
Yes!
You got a chocolate lollipop today.
Yay!
How did you stop the pascal from melting?
Like we even materials.
Stopped it? Yes. Were there better materials than others? What was the best one?
The phone.
Good job, guys.
Thank you very much.
Aubrey and Emilio, thank you.
You guys are more than welcome to stay with us or you can head out and enjoy the nice weather. Your choice. Or your parents.
You can do public comments if you want.
And if you stay, you have to read Mr. Altmeier's financial report.
Okay.
All right, number six, student recognition. So, I think we have Mr. Brown here.
Tonight, I am proud to present the members of the Huntley High School Journalism Team who on April 26th placed at this year's IHSA Journalism State Tournament in Bloomington Normal. First off, we have Jesse Gawn who placed third in newspaper design. Caitlin Busky who placed fifth in sports writing. And we have a third person who is not able to be here, Ava Burns, who placed sixth in radio news. And as always, I just wanna thank Dr. Bealan, all of you, for your support. We can't do this without you guys backing us up, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, moving on to number seven, public comment. Are there any public comments? I can't. All right, no public comments? All right, number eight, revision adoption of the agenda. I had one suggestion. I don't think we have to do this, but I'd like to move out number 13.7. Remember publicly discuss it if it's a closed session, so if there was any discussion, we can have it. I don't know if there will be. But I'm gonna move 13.7 to 14.5. There's no issue with that. So, I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as noted with moving 13.7 to 14.5. And I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Corriano. And I think that's a voice call. So, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. I'm sorry, didn't mean to say that.
You have a sarcastic name there. All right, Selena White, the superintendent's report.
We'll go ahead and start with donations. We are always very thankful for our families and our community for the donations to support specific activities or events in our building or the district as a whole. So, we have Tim and Bonnie Strong Harbeck, a thousand dollars to the Huntley High School Band. Village Pizza and Pub, $250, check to the girls bowling team. ICA, $5,000, check, $5,000 to the cheer team. Inventory, inventory trading company, $495 to the softball team. We received a number of checks for soccer in a variety of different amounts. Maddie Rumchek, Anthony and Michelle Neber, Marlene Morning, and again, Michelle Neber and Patricia Cameron. No Regrets Inc., $4,619 for baseball. $8,127 check for a softball fundraiser. $9,206 for girls lacrosse. $10,896 for girls soccer. $12,102 for lacrosse fundraiser as well. So, we thank all of the community for their continued support and donations. Few updates. One is just a quick update. It's not something we need to bring forward. We're not changing our calendar for next year, day 12. But there was a recommendation that administration did review in terms of our early childhood start date. They have typically started on the day after kindergarten. First grade through 12th grade starts on that Wednesday. Kindergarten as a kind of a shift to make sure the ins and outs get done. The first day, then join us on that Thursday. And with some professional development opportunities to make sure all of the class structures, the visual schedule, and all of the things needed to ensure that our... And with some, um, professional development opportunities to make sure all of the class structures, the visual, um, schedule and all of the things needed to ensure that our, our kids, uh, in our early childhood. Uh, remember it's our at-risk program and IET program, um, to ensure that everything is set. We wanted to, there was a recommendation for that to be on a Friday. Uh, they would come in and kind of meet the classroom, the teachers, do all of those things, kind of that introductory in, um, have that weekend and come back and really get them all rolling. And as administration, uh, supported that recommendation coming from the staff over at UCC. So again, a little different than the required dates and whatnot. With that shift of starting, there was a, um, parent ed day that we needed to shift around later. So that they are still getting the same number of school days, just shifting to meet the needs of the kiddos that started that school year. So wanted to update that. I know that, uh, Dr. Powell, um, will make sure all of those things are communicated. Uh, this was made sure that everything is updated and will be on, um, the website and everything showing all of those things. We did want to share that with the board and again, it's just another way to, to support our staff by doing to that transition. And there is a lot of end of the year excitement going on, cannot believe we're at that time. Um, but a few things just to highlight, um, last Saturday, uh, we had our first dual degree cohort, um, graduate from MCC. It's with eighteen of our students, uh, seniors who achieved their associate degree a week before they get their high school diploma. But, uh, very, very excited that, um, that, uh, program and the hard work from the curriculum department, uh, the partnership with MCC and the opportunities. And those numbers that keep growing in our, our next cohorts as they're coming through. So that was a really special, uh, event to be able to be at. And a variety of different reasons that students went into that program, um, all very valid and to see the excitement from the parents, um, and the students as they walked across that stage and were able to get that associate's degree. Thank you board for supporting that and the hard work that the curriculum department did to, to ensure another opportunity for our students. This Saturday, we're going to celebrate seven hundred and fifty-ish, I don't have the exact number, uh, students graduating from Huntley High School. Next week, our eighth grade promotions on Tuesday and Wednesday. Lots of field days, lots of end of the year picnics, excitement, uh, going on through the buildings. And so, uh, again, it's a very, very bittersweet time. Everybody's very excited about the end of the year, their, uh, new beginnings, depending on what, you know, grade or where they are headed off to. Um, but also very sad time, right? They're leaving their classrooms, they're leaving their, um, friends, they're leaving their staff. And so, uh, I know we'll see a lot of tears, more my favorite thing, we, uh, big tradition is the, the senior walk. Uh, and many people saw that video, um, kudos to Jimmy Moore for putting that out there and, and together, it was so well done. Um, but another one that many people don't know is on that very last day, um, as the kids, regardless of what grade that they are in, um, hopping on those buses, that the entire staff at the buildings are out waving them off. Many of them have, I'm getting goosebumps, you know, thinking about that day, is there, uh, there, I'm crying for a moment, you, you have kids hanging out the window, but not while the bus is moving. Um, but it is, it's one of those sad days, there's a lot of tears of both joy and, um, sadness. And, and so, uh, again, kudos to everybody for a, a well-done year. And so I just had a couple of words to say as we close out the twenty twenty-three school year. Um, I want to extend my deepest gratitude to our incredible staff and dedicated administrators, our supportive board of educators and our committed teachers and our wonderful parents. But most importantly, I'm super proud of our amazing students. We celebrated a lot of successes this year and I think we made, um, some significant strides and movement in addressing some of the challenges that we felt over the last few years in the district. And I'm truly blessed to be part of that, this great district and am excited to see that, uh, things that are coming to fruition and what lies ahead. And with that, we'll kind of tide over, we don't have our video quite ready, but we're going to push it out, uh, tomorrow. Um, one of those things that lies ahead is our third year of our annual, um, Raiders Reach Together Community Wide Event. And so students will be getting their books tomorrow at the elementary level. Um, any middle schoolers or high schoolers that want to participate in this, uh, will be able to, um, pick up a book. But our unveiling is we will be doing start with this year and very, very excited about the messages that we can do. Um, so students will be bringing home a copy of the book, our scavenger hunt through our local businesses, so encouraging that community, um, shopping local, dining local and all of that. And then, um, again, our schedule as we move forward, we will have live reading on Mondays at the library. Got some feedback to try it down in the middle of the day. Families thought that that might be a little bit easier, they're looking for things for their kiddos to do during the day. Uh, and so we will have community guest readers, um, each Monday, starting on June tenth. With our culminating activity, watching the movie Friday, August ninth, uh, on our football field. So lots more information about pushing, um, out information about how we can practice literacy skills throughout the summer. For my updates.
Just a comment, um, Mrs. Lombard, um, my graduation was yesterday as well, so also a wonderful opportunity.
We had ten students, um, and one, nine, uh, from our district and one, uh, from Moringo. And we had culminating events for, um, ten of our students and Mrs. Gill, your, your staff did eight, oh, not doctors. Um, did a fantastic job, an incredible speaker that was extremely inspirational. So well done to, uh, the staff for putting that on and the accomplishments that our kiddos have had. Many of them since they were three and now hitting twenty-two, so thanks for acknowledging.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lombard. We will now move on to number ten, uh, Mr. Alker.
Thank you very much, I have a few updates. Uh, I have a good news item, I have a bad news item. But I'm going to go a little off script and I'm going to talk about a third item because I ran into a former student today. Um, and it reminded me, a little end of year excitement actually, it reminded me while we're all here. And it not only made my day, it made my week, it might have made my month actually. So nine to ten years ago, we started the medical academy, right? And we all remember that. I remember when the first group graduated. And I remember that first group because in our main hallway here, we have a picture, or we used to have a picture, of that first medical academy crew. And every month and a while, over the last, ooh, six years, I would run into one of the students, Lauren. And I've talked to her about going to college and what are you doing? And she, she continued on in college seeking a medical degree. And, and making and talking about the impact that the medical academy had. And I knew it's been a few years since I ran into her, but I ran into her today, right? Because college is over. And I ran into her and I knew it's been almost five or six years. And I said, "Well?" And she looked at me with a big smile and she said, "I'm a doctor of physical therapy." "Just happened last week." And so she was so, so excited and she talked about, uh, the medical academy. She actually said she was there just a few weeks ago, Renee St. Clair, and asked her to come out and talk to the students and, and the advantages of the medical academy and trying to convince them to forge their way into the, into the health-related field. So anyway, I wanted to share that because it was awesome, the look on her face, she was so excited. Um, totally made my day, so I just wanted to share that and open to that. Uh, now on the fiscal and financial matters. Uh, the first item is something I talked about at the last meeting, the committee of the whole meeting. And that was the opportunity, the debt repurchase and refunding opportunity with the series twenty twenty, twenty twenty debt. And that debt approximates forty, forty-five, forty-six million dollars. And this week, we had an opportunity, Mr. Bittman, Mr. Quagliano and myself, talking with PMA and Bob Lewis. We had an opportunity to talk about the repurchase and refunding of that debt via a tender offering. And a tender offering is where we identify and we find, we actually find the owners of that twenty twenty debt, the forty-five million dollars of debt. And we offer them to repurchase that debt. And then we refinance that debt. And if we do so, and if we were to find approximately maybe one-third of that forty-five million dollars, it could yield as much as five hundred thousand to about a million dollars of debt service savings. So we agreed after the meeting that it is a good opportunity for the district to move forward, but there's several things that we still need to do. Uh, in the past, the board has, is been familiar with a parameters resolution. So in the next several weeks or next month, we will be bringing hopefully, um, a parameters resolution, asking the board to give the authority to Mr. Bittman, Mr. Quagliano and myself. So that if we do have an opportunity and we identify bondholders that are willing to sell us our bonds back and so that we can restructure our debt. And it's not that we're going to restructure our debt, we're just going to refinance our debt and leave it where it is. Um, we can do so, so that's what the parameters resolution will do. In the meantime though, uh, we would have to pay somebody, an information agent, to identify all the bondholders. And that's about six thousand dollars of district cost to do so. At that time, um, we think it's worth a worthwhile effort to expend six thousand dollars to have an information agent identify, um, the bondholders and question the bondholders if they would be interested in the repurchase. Uh, which will then give us the opportunity to make a decision whether or not we move forward with a rating. And the rating might cost upwards of ten, twelve thousand dollars. Um, and then dependent upon all of those things, within maybe forty-five to sixty days, we would go out and actually go through the repurchase and restructuring or the refunding of that debt. So I just wanted to make the board aware of that. And if there are any additional questions, we have Mr. Bittman, Mr. Quagliano and myself to answer those.
Yes, I'll just point out that multiple other districts in other areas in Illinois are doing this. So it hasn't been successful for anybody who's kind of questioning refinancing it when interest rates are clearly higher, this, this doesn't work out. Um, and they, they have done that, I think Shawo Park Services, EBS, EBS was one of them, uh, and there were a few others. And, uh, the people we were choosing to work with were an Illinois firm or they had done a lot of work.
And I'm a writer who's very familiar with the process and has had a lot of success in, in doing this type of repurchase and refunding. So, uh, the good news is, right, if we can save five hundred thousand to a million dollars off our future debt stream that expires in eleven fiscal years. Um, it's just additional opportunities that we can give our taxpayers, uh, to reduce the impact of the overall levy because our bond and interest will be going down by that amount of debt, uh, refunding or savings. Okay? So that's that one, so that's, that's good news. Some good things hopefully coming our way and hopefully we have good luck with the information agents and we will continue to keep the board apprised on all of that. Uh, the second item, and we've been talking about Medicaid for a long time. We've been talking about the SPA, right? The state plan amendment, and we've been talking about HFS, Health and Family Services, um, coming up with a new revised way to Rainbow School Districts for Medicaid. And that's called the cost settlement approach. And they've been working on this for two and a half, three years. I was part of the initial stakeholder group. And part of the reason that HFS, Health and Family Services, have been withholding a lot of the payments all across the state of Illinois is because they knew they were going to be rolling out this cost settlement. Well, this cost settlement isn't just for the current year, it's actually retroactive. It's retroactive back to FY twenty-two. And so now the HFS, just recently, this week, released every district's cost settlement. And what the cost settlement is, is based on each district's pool, pool of health-related salaries and benefits, individuals that every district has, right? So your, your nurses, your speech paths, your, uh, social workers, your psychs, your OTs, your PTs, right? All of the eligible health-related services that we provide our students that are Medicaid eligible, they're in a pool of money and based on the number of Medicaid-eligible students that each school district has, that's all part of the calculation. They then determine what each district would receive. And it's retroactive to FY twenty-two, which is great. Actually, there was a ninety million dollar infusion of Medicaid to school districts across the state. That's good. Ninety million was infused, in other words, they're going to hand out an additional ninety million dollars. But the problem is eighty percent, eighty-one percent of the school districts won are going to receive more money. And nineteen percent of those school districts, here's where the bad news comes in, are going to have to give back money. And we're going to lose money for FY twenty-two. So unfortunately, you, you see where I'm going with this. So in FY twenty-two, we collected seven hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in Medicaid for fee for service, right? You've always heard us talk about, you know, the operational efficiency of Medicaid. We cross our Ts, we dot our Is, we make sure we are billing for everything that is eligible, right? For Medicaid-eligible students, eligible services, we receive reimbursement, eligible reimbursements or refunds, if you will, of seven hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Based on that calculation, because it's based on averages, it's based on a lot of different things that I expressed two and a half years ago to the stakeholder group I didn't agree with because I knew this would happen. Um, we, we are only eligible for four hundred, approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of reimbursement, which means we need to reimburse HFS and we haven't determined, or they haven't determined what that reimbursement process is yet, or they haven't shared that with us, three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. So there are a hundred and sixty-four districts, a hundred and sixty-four of us out there that have to give back, right? And we're not happy, right? Uh, I'm, I'm really close to looking at this from a legislative standpoint a little bit. Um, and the reason I say that, if, if you recall when the EVF funding came out, evidence-based funding plan came out, art, when that rolled out, art of the mission and the, the goal of that was not a single school district should lose anyone, right? And I communicated that two and a half years ago to HFS and they said, "Well, it's going to be a very small percentage, only a very few districts will lose money. And we don't think that many are going to lose money." And I did the calculation for myself and I knew based on the calculation that we were going to lose maybe a hundred or two hundred thousand, about three hundred and forty-four thousand. Um, so I'm just updating the board on that event because that will certainly impact our FY twenty-five numbers, twenty-four numbers currently, and it will also impact our FY twenty-five budget numbers. So, um, I still need to work all that out and understand what that reimbursement process is. Um, but we will continue to look into that. Uh, part of the biggest reason we saw a decrease was one-on-one aides. When we provide a one-on-one aide in an IET for medical purposes, right, that is a reimbursable amount. And we've got several one-on-one aides for Medicaid-eligible kids. And in FY twenty-two, we collected, we were reimbursed three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for one-on-one aides. We do a very good job of collecting Medicaid reimbursement from a one-on-one aides. Well, under the cost settlement calculation, we are only getting eleven thousand dollars. For all of those one-on-one aides. So that's part of what I'm going to try to fight a little bit, so. Um, but stay tuned on all that, but I did want to let the board know everything I know at this point in time. Not good news, but we're going to continue to see where this goes. And we are still receiving guidance from Health and Family Services as well. I wish it was a better story. And I'm in a much better mood today than I was a couple of days ago when I talked to Mrs. Lombard a few times. Give me a couple of days to settle down. Any questions?
Yeah, I, I do, um, although it's probably premature at this point. How, how do you fight this legislatively?
I don't know, I just know that there's a hundred and sixty-four districts out there that are not going to be happy.
Yeah.
Because we had legitimate Medicaid reimbursable claims. Right? It should be either or. I, when, when the state's plan amendment was rolled out, I offered that up as a solution. No district should have to reimburse because we went to a cost settlement. If they collect more than the cost settlement, what that means is that maybe during the year, we, we receive more Medicaid-eligible kids. During the year, we had more Medicaid-eligible services that were provided that yielded a higher refund, if you will, than what the calculus calculation was. It should be an either or, not a only the cost settlement and you have to give everything back that you collected over the past. And they were unwilling to write that into the spot. So I don't know where we can go legislatively, but, but I'm going to look into it.
Yeah, and I recognize it's premature at this juncture because all this guidance is just coming out and, and there, it sounds like there's certain steps, follow-through steps that are still incomplete as well.
In two thousand and fourteen, everybody thought there was no way that we would pass that certificate of air, P-TAB adjustment bill. Thought it was impossible. Uh, but we just continued to be persistent and push and push and push and we got something done. So, so maybe, you know, and I'm willing to give that a go if the board is okay with it.
Absolutely.
Uh, and that's the only update I have. Maybe I should have ended with that student.
It would feel good.
Yeah, it's a story, but a different story. I've got a lot of stories, so I said it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Altmeier. Uh, moving on to number eleven, Ms. Barnes.
Yes, good evening, board. Um, you should have received the FOIA report for March, uh, I'm sorry, for April, no, for May, it's May, yes, it's May, it's May. Um, anybody have any questions on that? Again, the FOIAs are posted publicly on the website, um, so if anyone is interested, they can find them there under FOIA. I just wanted to give the board a brief update on whatever happens to mass authentication system search. Um, just to refresh everyone's memory, we, a few weeks ago, received word that our current mass authentication platform will no longer be supported as of June thirtieth. So, um, that has caused us to do a, a lot of fast, um, you know, digging into and researching the best solutions for us going forward. So at this point, um, the tech- So at this point, the Technology Department and myself have been looking at, we've looked at four different providers and have had conversations and demos with all four of their products. So we've learned a lot. We are also trying to ensure, you know, I guess just for the boards, in case you're curious, the types of things that we look at when we do this, there's quite a few, but I just wanted to name a few. So cost is a big one. Okay, so we're currently spending ten thousand six hundred dollars a year with Swiss Reach, which is pretty typical for a straight-up one-way mass communication system. Integration with Power Schools, a user-friendly interface, so that the system is easy to use for our schools. Reliability, support, and something really important would be our options for connecting with families, so ensuring that we have translation capability, accessibility, and then finally, you know, kind of for my purposes, communications, just analytics, message tracking, all that kind of stuff. So those are the types of things that we talk to when we interview the companies. The other part of the due diligence in this is talking with people who are currently using the product. And that's presented us some challenges with some of these vendors, and it's been an interesting deal, but we've got a couple of new reps who don't have a client list in Illinois. So it's, it's been interesting. Fortunately, I've been doing this a long time, so I know how to sort of work around that. But anyway, I've been able to have a few conversations now, and I've been able to send out a few emails, so I'm still awaiting some other information. But to me, that's a very important part of the process. I want to talk to people who are using the system and are happy with it. I don't think that's too much to ask, so I'm going to make sure that happens. And then, you know, as it stands right now, we think we've narrowed this down to two companies, but there's still a few more questions and answers that I feel like we need, and we hope to be able to make this decision within the week, because typically, implementation time is about four to six weeks. They want to have time for the integration of the data and then also time to test things out. So we're right at that, at that mark. Just wanted to give the board an update on that and find out if you have any questions for us.
The old system goes away at the end of June, correct? So the four to six weeks.
We're right there.
Right there.
I have a question on the FOIA.
Yeah.
As far as the one from, about the RAS, about, because I know those invoices, I was scrolling through those, and if I missed this, I don't, maybe I did, but, so are all those funds, are all those amounts above and beyond the grant that that was? I mean, is there anywhere that all those funds are covered by the grant, or that's...
I have to take a look at those specifically that are in there with it. The funds should be budgeted through the grant, and Dr. McCrindall would probably not be approving that if the budget was over budget, right? So we could definitely double check on those unless you know the answer off the top of your head, but is it at all... I do, they definitely were within the community partnership grant, which does run out at the end of the school year. So we are taking, we're preevaluating how we support RAS and how we're going to be able to provide the needed support as well as in our local budget right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Bar? Thank you. Number twelve, President's Support Estimate, a couple comments. Five of us went to the, each of the schools and worked in the lunchroom, and I will tell you very clearly, they are all very organized, they run a very tight ship, and it was pretty, I didn't get put to work like some of them, but it is a very well-organized machine that pushes a lot of food to keep our kids fed, which makes sure they're not angry in the afternoon. The kids were all, at least from my perspective, very respectful. I did not hear the complete chaos I expected from middle school when I was in there. Everybody kind of went through the line, and it was, it was a really great thing to do. I don't know if I have any other comments about it, but it was a lot of fun, and I appreciate all the hard work they did.
Yeah, it was, it was a lot of fun. I started the middle school and then went to Martin and then Chestwick, so definitely got easier. Marlowe definitely put me to work, and it was a lot of fun.
I went to Heinemann, they gave me a pizza. They made a custom pizza for me. They pushed Sean to work. I don't know. All right, that's the only thing I've got there. Any new business under twelve one? Okay, with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda, number thirteen here. Any discussion about that? Okay, so I'll make a move, a motion to approve the consent agenda in there with the exception of thirteen seven, which we moved out.
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Craddy. Can you have a roll call?
Mr. Bivin?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
All right, so the consent agenda passes seven zero. Move on all the way down to number fourteen, action item. Fourteen point one, HR personnel, kind of a busy list here.
Yeah, I don't have any additions. If you can discuss in closed session, I'll take any questions.
There are no questions. We do have a number of our individuals that are on this report tonight that I would just like to have stand and have a few brief things. Two candidates are internal candidates. We have Dr. Anna Foyou. Well, she's not standing up anyway, right? Dr. Foyou will be the lady of the conference and headed over to the district office in the learning and innovation. Dr. Foyou has been with our district in multiple principal roles over the years, and I know that she has wanted to, she's doing a great job in both of those buildings, and the opportunity for her to grow in her leadership, some of the goals that she has, and the needs that we currently have in our district are a perfect fit for the skill set and the movement and the direction that we have. And so we are very, very excited to be keeping her in our district, but also expanding her knowledge and skill set to be able to touch all types of our buildings. So welcome, Anna. Thank you. Thank you. Finally, Katie Surshitt. Katie has not been with us as long as Anna Foyou in the district, but has been at Conley for a number of years. And while the number of years is not the same, the impact has, has been. And the momentum of not only components within the building, Katie is also working on her Edis Specialist degree right now to get a superintendent's certificate. So I've had the opportunity to work with her on some projects, also to be able to make sure that she has the wealth of knowledge of all of the things she's worked with, probably Edis departments and cabinet members through that. And so not only has her skill set and her passion for education touched Conley, it has definitely impacted all of our components that we've been working on, and that will roll out. So we are very, very excited to be able to recommend Katie to step into that principal role, to keep that momentum going at Conley. It is the perfect fit for us in the district, and also, again, being able to continue the work she's done on the larger scale and committees and all of that. So Katie, we are extremely excited to be recommending you for a principalship here in our district. Now, we have two other individuals that I can't have as much background on because they are joining us from external school districts, but we, again, are extremely excited about the conversations that we've had through the interview process with backgrounds that they have had to be able to step in at the exact moment of the needs that we have, whether it's at our building or at our district. So we'll start with Dana Halpert. And Dana is going to be joining us stepping into the role, recommended to be jumping in over at Marlowe. And within just a few minutes of our screener interview, knowing all of the things that we have going on in our district, and the feedback of what staff was looking for, I knew that was a perfect fit. And it was hard to put it in words, but the experiences that you've shared with things both in education and outside of education that you're going to be able to bring to Marlowe are exciting. We've got great things going on in that district, and to be able to carry those through and take us to that next level, our team and staff are extremely excited to be recommending Dana to the Marlowe family. And then we have Detective Sett. The set is being recommended. Again, I think I got in a little bit of trouble in our conversation because the interviews were upstairs with myself and Dr. McCrindall, and then we were supposed to be switching downstairs to the whole team. And we probably could have sat and talked for many, many, many hours about experiences, philosophies, all the things, and it was just a very comfortable fit, again, knowing about the direction of where we want to continue going with our multilingual programming. So a wealth of experiences and backgrounds with all kinds of things. Her excitement and her passion about working with multilingual families, she knew a lot about our district, and they just seemed to fit perfectly. The team felt very, very similar on those pieces, and so that we welcome you in just a moment to the District 158 family, and are super excited to be continuing this journey as we've started this momentum. I know you can take us even further, so.
I'm excited to be here. Thank you so much.
I don't think I'm looking at anybody else.
No.
No.
Well done. All right, any discussion around that? With that, I will make a motion to approve the personnel and welcome our new folks to the district.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Bivin?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
All right, with that, approve seven zero. Welcome again.
Congratulations and welcome.
All right, Dr. Veer, continue with fourteen two, anything?
Just some updated job descriptions here for occupational therapists, financial specialists for special education, the new assistant athletic director role at High School, network technician, one to five, and then payroll manager. So some job descriptions, one that needs to be created new, so others that just need updating as we are reflecting those roles here moving forward.
Any discussion? Okay, make a motion to approve fourteen point two, the updated job description.
Second.
Thank you. I think Mr. Troy.
Oh, he said it.
Mr. Troy got it.
I just, it's like a balloon.
All right, can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bivin?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
All right, with that, fourteen point two passes seven zero. So next, fourteen point three, establish regular meetings. We had some discussion about this last time. I think we stayed removed.
Yes, so we would like to recommend administration sit down after the feedback and the discussion and some of the trials that we had done this year with some different workshops. And so the recommendation is that currently, we don't have in July and January a committee of the whole, that we would also, I'll say remove, but it's really repurposed or change, the meeting in November and the meeting in April, and shift those to a November seventh and an April tenth meeting for the purpose of curriculum. The reason that we decided to hit those months, November worked out wonderfully because we do have the triple I, but it's also a perfect time that we will have our data fresh and, I'm in Margrove, and all of those things, so to really have a deep dive conversation around our data from this year, as well as what we're seeing with our local data. And then again, in April, having that discussion. While we're in the midst of some of the spring things, we will have a lot of that data from the fall and the winter, looking at wrapping up and making some decisions moving forward and ahead. So again, not eliminating the meeting, but just shifting that focus to be in-depth curriculum workshop. And then we did go ahead and make sure that we had the four, I believe they were on there before, but put the four PTACs to continue that momentum and movement there. And we'll try that again with more quarterly-type meetings, and then if we feel from feedback from, after having two years from staff and parents who are participating on that, maybe looking at if you need to take some time on it to see where the works go. So any discussions around that recommendation?
Yeah, and I think some of the concerns, I personally like the changes, but some of the concerns of eliminating the committee of the whole will be essentially it makes the regular meetings longer. I mean, I think we can monitor that and see if that's true. We can always add one if we need.
If we need it, right, we could certainly jump in there and do that, and I know that I'm making sure that we've got our things prioritized and thinking ahead, forward-thinking on those pieces and making sure that we are planning so that there's not a rush or something that did pop up. March could have been a month that we did that, but we know that there's a lot of staffing things that need to happen in deadlines, and we certainly didn't want to miss if we ever needed with that piece of that. So again, we'll make sure that we're forward-thinking and planning those things ahead so that we can spread out our topics and looking at those components. We'll still have our special education advisory committee and components like that. We will have our impact and those pieces, and so some of those presentations, obviously to for the audiences that are, you know, the main stakeholders there, will want to make sure that we're also doing presentations with a variety of those. And I do know for the parents out there in the audience that we've got these on here, we will sit down this summer with some of the other committees to make sure that we are not double-looking at parents the best that we can to kind of spread those out so that parents aren't trying to be on Zoom at one and then at another meeting that same evening. And so we'll, we'll make sure that we've got that and to try to avoid any student performances, concerts, those kinds of things, so that people can attend and still participate.
Any discussion? Okay, with that, I will make a motion to approve fourteen point three, the establishment of the regular meetings, fourteen point four, fourteen point five, as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Quagliano. Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Bivin?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
All right, with that, fourteen point three passes seven zero. We'll move on to fourteen point four, some supplemental purchase orders and accounts available. Mr. Allmeyer?
Nothing added.
All right, any questions for Mr. Allmeyer about the additional one? All right, not seeing any discussion, I'll make a motion to approve fourteen point four, supplemental purchase orders and accounts available as indicated.
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Quagliano. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Bivin?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
All right, with that, fourteen point four passes seven zero. Move on to fourteen five, which was thirteen point seven. My bad for not catching this on the agenda originally, but I feel more comfortable because this was discussed in closed session that we should give the opportunity to the board if they so choose to have any discussion about this, around this. This is just a normal thing where we're eliminating basically some of the recordings from way back when. This is a normal thing that could have been happening, and we're just going ahead and doing it. Any discussion about that? Okay, and not seeing any other additional discussion, I'll make a motion to approve fourteen point five, which was thirteen point seven, the Board of Education recording.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Troy. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bivin?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
All right, with that, the Board of Education recordings and their destruction has been approved seven zero. To fifteen, public comment, I have one public comment, Ms. Cross.
I wanted to just come up here and say, I just attended the eighth grade dance over at Marlowe, and I still can't wrap my head around that, but I'm going to be sending Taylor to high school. And it was all kids included, which was amazing. My daughter danced all night in that center of the room. My only gripe is that my daughter is leaving Marlowe on Wednesday, and I still don't know any of her friends or buddies. Their names... any of her friends or buddies, their names, or any of their contact information to help her foster those friendships. Beyond her school walls, she doesn't know who those kids are. This is something that special ed has lacked for a very long time. I brought it up in a bunch of CAC meetings and late meetings, and I understand that there's HIPAA rules and all of the things, but our kids are not like everybody else's kids. They can't just create those friendships on their own. They can't just say, hey, what's your number, what's your SNAP? My daughter does not have a smartphone. She doesn't, and even if she did, God help her, she had SNAP. It's not possible. So we need some way to help our kids foster those relationships. I didn't know that Mr. Craddy's daughter was part of the buddies club until she wrapped her arms around my daughter. How is that new to me? Taylor will be going into summer and have no contact with any of her friends until August, when she walks into that high school. That is a different experience than everybody else going into summer so excited to not be with their friends because we'll still see them. So that is my request, because in order to help them foster those relationships and promote inclusion, we have to somehow bridge that gap. But otherwise, the dance was amazing, and thank you to that because seeing that realization was a good eye-opener for me, and I just wanted to thank you guys for that, but we need to make a difference for that. And I had one other comment, but I wrote it sideways, so give me a second. Hold on. Oh, my last question was you guys were talking about the RAD and the FOIA's. Are we submitting a new grant for that, or when does the current one expire? I'm just curious. Thank you.
With that, no other roll call. If anybody wants to jump in. All right, with that, I move to 16, adjournment. So I will make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting at 8:07 PM.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
All right.
All votes. All right. (inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
There's, it's like a phone call now.